I call the order the Lake Mills City Council meeting for June 19th, 2018 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, could you call a roll, please?
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Knippel?
Here.
Diane Fritch and Doug Fritch had both previously let us know that would be absent this evening.
So, item number three, the correction and approval of the regular city council and work session minutes of June 5th, 2018. I'll entertain a motion. Will we table those?
So moved.
Second.
Let's call a vote when you're ready.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
Correspondence. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to bring up at this time?
I had a number of comments about the Rock Lake Activity Center item tonight, but I'm sure we'll hear about that during question and public comment.
Anything? Okay, we'll close correspondence and we'll move on to questions and public comment. Glass is here so I can read it. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until the hearing. Public comment may also be made at the time, at this time, on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. Is there any public comments?
I'm temporarily at Fort Fremont, resident of City Lake Mills. I got a lot of questions about the community center proposal using city property taxes. I want to re-review the ad hoc committee. The website doesn't list the members. I'm assuming since this affects city property taxes, they're all city residents? Is that correct? No, they're not. So they included non-city property taxpayers. They did list meeting notices. October 19th, 2017, two in July, one in June. Now, the agendas had minutes approval, so I'm assuming no minutes were taken at these committee meetings?
No, there should be minutes for every meeting.
The agendas of those meetings do not have a approval of minutes. And I went to the city council packets online between June 20th, 2017, and November 21st. I did not see them at the other committee minutes.
Okay. We will check on them and see what we can figure out.
Okay, so we're getting advice from non-city taxpayers that spend city money?
Todd?
Right.
That's not an accurate statement?
Right.
Okay. You've got a recommendation from a group of people who did include non-city residents?
That's right. Okay, thank you for correcting me on that. Please correct me. The report alludes that we currently do not have a senior or community center, which we do. Of all available dates and times that it's open for reservation, what percentage of the year is actually reserved? Nobody knows?
No, we'll get back to you.
So, I'm assumed that it's not quite at full capacity?
No, but it's also not suited for the same purposes as we're looking at for the new community center either. So, that's, that should be in your, your statements also.
I mean, the lack of exercise facility?
And lack of separate facilities so you can actually hold different programs at the same time.
So we're talking a school building?
We're talking a building that has separate facilities so we can hold more than one thing at one time. And we can allow those citizens to actually keep things out in specific areas. So if you had a true senior center, you could actually set up a senior center to where they didn't have to set up and tear down every single time they wanted to use it. So those are some of the things that were talked about in the meetings.
How is that an issue now? We hired a custodian to help it tear up and set up.
Right. We don't want them to tear, set up and tear down. We want them to have a permanent facility that can be used by that set of members of the community.
So, in order to really tear, tear down and set up, we're going to a million dollar building?
You know, you're, you're putting it down to one small little thing.
Ready.
So, just keep that in mind. This is for the whole community, not just for one set of people inside the community. And our community center downstairs while we have it doesn't fit the bill on every single thing that we have looked at in the ad hoc committee. So, keep those things in mind when you're, when you're making these comments because the facility downstairs is there, it's available for certain things, but it's not set up for other things. Something that could be 24 hours a day, which they can do down at these other facilities, we can't do here. So just keep those things in mind. We didn't look at just a small little subset of people in this community. We looked at how we can better this whole community and not just have one small room downstairs in, in this building to make use for the community.
Is 150 family members of Rock Lake Activity Center? That's on their, that's on their Facebook page.
And that's fine. There's a lot more than you, there's a lot more that they use that.
What percentage of that are actually city residents? What percentage of that is actually city residents?
That doesn't matter.
Well...
Because they'll be paying dues.
Obviously not enough dues, otherwise they wouldn't be asking for money from the city.
Okay. I'll stop right there. I think you're misconstruing some of the things and I think you might need to come to us personally and talk about this before you go any further.
Multi-million dollar building should be discussed in the open. When was the last time there was public comment?
It can be discussed in the open, that's fine. There's nothing wrong with that. But we want to make sure you understand what we went into going into this process.
But you do understand that there's more community than the city residents, have the townships being asked to contribute money.
Yep.
Yeah.
No, they aren't.
They're not, okay.
Mike?
No.
You need to remember this is questions and public comment.
You're right.
We're not in a debate.
Yeah.
Todd can ask us questions and then we can go on.
So it's contrarian?
We've already taken him past his...
It's contrarian, there, the percentage of the people who use that belong to townships, and the townships are not going to be asked for money to contribute on their behalf?
Yes, they will.
But they're going to be asked?
Yes, they will.
Okay. They are asked to contribute to a share of the library expansion and the chairperson of the Lake Mills Township said no. So, do you think that they're going to contribute towards this project?
In a different way, yes.
How in a different way?
Because if they're going to use it, they're going to pay for the use of it.
But the city's not going to get money back for our contribution?
The city will get their money back. We're looking at this facility as it needs to be self-sustainable and the money will be put back into the coffers. We're not going to build something and just spend money willy-nilly and not get anything back out of it.
So you're saying that we're going to get money back?
If it doesn't make fiscal sense.
Mike, can we just let him answer the questions?
You're right. Okay, Steve.
Because the fees we collect to rent our current community center do not go towards construction. They barely cover the costs of operating expenses. Correct? Correct. I mean, it's, it's a question. Do the fees we charge for using the community center downstairs, do they help pay back toward capital costs?
Todd, this is a questions and public comments. So, you can ask the questions, we can say that...
All right.
You just keep asking and we'll try and get to you.
All right. I guess that's my point. City taxpayers are on the hook for this, for community unit facility. I mean, if this is a school project, I would have no complaints. Being a neighbor to the facility, that's, I'm happy, but we have a school district that better represents the community more than the city.
Yep. And the school district is deeply involved in it. And you've got to remember, we're still at the very beginning of this, very, very beginning stages.
Mike, I'm going to advise you again, we're not in a public hearing. This isn't specifically on the agenda in this forum.
Okay.
What he's talking about is not what's on the agenda.
You're right.
I'm just asking you a question, so...
Yeah, I understand that, Todd, but he, he really can't make this an agenda item, which he's trying, which you're trying to do. Just ask the questions, we'll get back to you.
All right, I'm just suggesting a public hearing at this time. You do have enough documents to go over everything. We had that for the first community center. We had open house, preliminary drawings, which I have not seen yet. So...
Okay.
There's still a lot of hard feelings left over from the previous building project. Complaints that the city met secretly, which was not true. And, I mean, when was the last time you had this agenda for public comment was part of the agenda? Just back October. That's when I was here last.
And you're talking for this?
Yeah. Other than the workshops?
No, I think it was March or February.
Yeah.
It wasn't a public hearing though, it was a report by the committee.
It was a report and then a work session.
Which did have a public comment.
Right.
Right. I mean, if this is going to go towards referendum, you've got to get people motivated in the school district. They just...
And like I said, I think you're, you're getting ahead of yourself. That's all part of the process. We aren't there yet, so thank you for your questions.
All right.
We'll get back to you as soon as we can on, on the questions you did ask.
All right.
My name is Susan Maloney. I'm the current director of the Rock Lake Activity Center and I wanted to address some of his concerns, but also just mention or point out in item D, the city manager's negotiation with the Rock Lake Activity Center, that the council consider that the proposed facility is planned as a nonprofit organization, which is what the Rock Lake Activity Center is now. And so, in running it as a nonprofit, we can fundraise, we can solicit donations, we can do all those things a nonprofit can do. And we have buy-in from the school district and the city, but it will run efficiently and be self-sustaining. It will not be a taxpayer burden to the city. It will not be another burden on the school district. But what we need to do is keep our nonprofit status. And right now, as many of you know, the Rock Lake Activity Center building is at the end of its lifespan and should we have to close our doors, we lose that status of being a nonprofit. So, in order to maintain that label, I would just ask that the board think about the future. Keep, whatever you can do to support the Activity Center will help us in the future when we do have the merger and the new facility is built. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else come forward, we're going to close questions and public comments and move on to the city manager's report. Steve?
I provided you with the last police department report from Chief Pat. So you've got that. And a couple of things I wanted to go over. We met with the DNR about the mill pond dredging study and we're trying to finalize that out and close that grant out by the end of the month. I sent you all a copy of the new estimate for South Main Street. It's generally about 10% higher across the board. Mulberry Street is still moving forward. All the property acquisition is pretty much done. You're awarding the electric construction tonight. So that, and I wanted to make sure you understood, that's not the same as the South Main Street project. This is a STP urban. It's actually a city street that they awarded us a grant on. South Main Street is a connecting highway, so it's actually a state highway. They call it a connecting highway, so the city street connects the two ends of Highway 89 together. So the, the way they're funded is totally different. So if you're, if you're looking at it from the standpoint of the agreement you see tonight for the Mulberry and compare it to the Main Street one, it would be, they're not going to be the same. I guess you noticed that there are buildings going up in the Mangin Development at the Andy Brewster.
Okay.
Crestview Platte is moving forward. We've had some development going on in the industrial park, the Loffenberg site, the Shade site, and the Campbell site. The automated meters are continuing to move forward at a rather slow pace, but continuing to move forward. We're coming up on our lead service lateral deadline for the DNR in July 31st. So we're a little bit concerned about that because we're only going to be about 50% done. I showed you the radium TO for the last time, so we've actually scheduled the tests to start. We should be able to have everything done on the timeline now that the DNR set for us, which is basically January 2019. We got our corrosion report requirement, so we'll have to start doing that. We're going to have to actually do a, a study and they laid out the methods for doing the study, so this grant will start that. That's also part of the lead lateral service. They assume that if you inject enough phosphates, you can line the lines well enough that you'll reduce the amount of lead that you're testing at those sites. So, the only problem with that is, is that we have a very small creek, so our phosphorus requirement into the creek is very low, so everything we put in at the front has to be taken out at the back. So, it might cost us more to put it in at the front, it'd also cost us more to take it out at the back. CMR is on tonight. We're working on getting everything for the EOC back up and running while the park concessions stand is, is complete. Are there any other questions?
All right. No, thanks, Steve. Moves us on to acceptance of minutes. Of the public works board, May 8th, 2018, the go-on record is written. Council business miscellaneous licenses. We have multiple tavern operator licenses. Could you read the names for me, please?
We have Crystal Haiti, Jolene Ack, Katie Klug, and James Curtis.
And I'll entertain a motion.
I move we grant tavern operator licenses to the four persons named.
I'll second.
Thank you. And let's go ahead and vote on that.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
Resolution 1823, recognition and appreciation of service for Patrick Mataszewski. Could you read that, please?
Resolution 18 dash 23, an appreciation of public service to the City of Lake Mills from Chief of Police Patrick D. Mataszewski. Whereas Patrick D. Mataszewski has served highly distinguished years with the City of Lake Mills Police Department, serving the city council, administration, and city, and the city with a constant desire to provide the highest level of service. And whereas Patrick D. Mataszewski has devoted numerous hours of providing positive contributions to all operations of the city while exhibiting the highest level of loyalty to the city and showing enthusiasm for his work. And whereas Patrick D. Mataszewski's resolute attention to public safety, constant professionalism, unique sense of humor, and ability to understand and respond to the needs of the people he served contributed to the constant improvement of the City of Lake Mills. Now therefore, be it resolved, the city council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby recognize the dedicated public service and career accomplishments of Patrick D. Mataszewski and extends best wishes for an enjoyable and successful retirement.
And do I have a motion of adoption?
I move we adopt resolution 1823.
A second? I'll second it.
Ready for vote?
Yep, ready for vote.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
And we actually have a plaque here for Pat. If you'd like to come on up, present you with the plaque. If you guys want to come down, we'll hand this out to him together.
Nobody writes in passes, we don't do it. You have no idea.
I reckon he has that mustache anywhere.
It's been an awesome five years. I'm glad you were here to listen to this conference, but I thank you. The plaque says, "In honor and appreciation of Patrick Mataszewski, thank, thank you for your five years of dedicated service presented by the City of Lake Mills 2018." So once again, thank you very much.
It's my most world-wrestling word. Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, I just, yeah, I hope you can have much prepared for that. I'm sure you've heard me talking up over the last five years, so I really would like to thank you, the council, for recognizing me. I really appreciate that. And I thank Diane, I'd like to thank council for all the support that you've given me in the six, five, and the last five years. It means a lot to us sometimes. I really appreciate it, especially these times. Thank you, sir. Enjoy the time.
Okay, that moves us on to item C, discussion decision on approving the appointment of successor agent David Krupi, QuickTrip Inc. Could you read the title of that, please?
Sure. Motion 18 dash 6 dash 2 dash 1, approving the appointment of successor agent for QuickTrip Inc.
I'll entertain a motion of adoption for that.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Call the vote when you're ready.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
Item D, discussion decision on authorizing the city manager to negotiate property development and future use, Rock Lake Activity Center. Could you read the title on that, please?
Motion 18 dash 6 dash 2 dash 2, authorizing the city manager to enter into negotiations on behalf of the City of Lake Mills with Lake Mills Area School District and the Rock Lake Activity Center regarding property development and future land use of the Rock Lake Activity Center located at 229 Fremont Street.
All right, I will entertain a motion of adoption for this.
I move that we adopt motion 18 6 2 2.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could you call a roll, please?
Should we have some discussion?
Yeah, okay. Maybe we should. That'd be a good idea. So...
Perhaps we could hear from Steve.
As, in regards to...
What this resolu, or what this motion entails?
This motion entails me being able to sit down with the groups and see what it's going to take to be able to keep the building open for at least, until we are capable of determining whether we want to buy the building or not.
Okay.
And that also allows them to keep their nonprofit status? Or it, it assists them with that if we, if there's anything we can do to help? Is that a true statement or not?
I'm not going to, I'm not going to make any statements about what's going to assist them with keeping their nonprofit status. I'm assuming, no matter what we did, they could keep their nonprofit status. I'm thinking that it would probably be more along the lines of they would be able to continue to perform the operations that they're performing now until such time as we decide to make some other choices.
Right, or if we decide to make a choice in the matter. And like I was saying earlier, this is all very preliminary. It's one option. It's one thing that we're looking at to help serve the community better. And I, I look at it as a whole, a community as a whole, town, city, school district, Rock Lake Activity Center, we're, we're supporting each other, so... Yeah, it's just a matter of what we can do, what we would like to do, and what we're able to do. And these are just preliminary steps that we have to go through to look at it and see if this suits our purpose. We all know we have the community center downstairs, but we also know that that doesn't serve the purpose of all of the features and things that we've been looking at as a way forward for this community to be a little healthier. So, that's all I have on this.
We, we met for quite a while and you did all the reports. You debated all the issues he brought up, so I don't think that anything that he suggested was new. I don't know that the minutes would provide him with the detail that he was looking for, but they are minutes.
Yeah, probably not, but we do need to get those out there so they're available and everybody understands that, you know, we're not, we're not trying to do this in any type of bubble. This is a whole community effort. Everybody needs to be involved. We will have, we will have public hearings, we'll have all sorts of stuff before we ever think about going to a referendum to do some of this stuff. The school district has referendums right now that they're way ahead of us and we definitely don't want to do anything to, to mess with what they have going on right now. But we do want to look to the future. We want to be able to provide stuff for the community members of all ages to be able to make use of classes, training, childcare facilities, things like that. So, that's where we're at with this.
And one thing I want to say is, the board did have quite the cross-section of Lake Mills citizens. We had, I was on it, so a high schooler, and then multi, multiple senior citizens, some people involved in the school district and the rec department. So we had quite the array of characters on the board working to get a balanced center.
Yep. Do you have anything, Vicki?
No, I just wanted to make it clear that we're not purchasing the building with this action.
Right.
That this is just terribly preliminary.
Yep.
And it's to help keep Rock Lake Activity Center going so that Rock Lake Activity Center doesn't shut down while we're making up our minds.
Yep. Steve, you good?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay. All right, now let's go for a roll call vote.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
Thanks for keeping me on track. Item E. Discussion decision on state municipal agreement Mulberry Street reconstruction. Can we get that title read, please?
Motion eighteen-six-two-three, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and the state of Wisconsin for the reconstruction of Mulberry Street.
I will entertain a motion for eighteen-six-two-three.
Show move.
A second? Okay, thank you. And some discussion on this. Steve, you were mentioning a couple of things in your?
Yeah, if you read it. I'm looking at page two, I think. Yeah, page two, at the top, in bold print. This project is currently scheduled in the state fiscal year two thousand and eighteen in accordance with the state sunset policy for urbanized area surface transportation program, urban projects. So this defines for you what kind of project this is. It's not a connecting highways project, which South Main Street would be. So if you're reading this project, and they put caps on this one. On the other one, everything was a percentage, up or down. On this one, it's a percentage until you hit a cap, and then we assume all the costs. We also did all the engineering. So you won't see, if you look at this and compare this one to the South Main Street one, we paid all the engineering on this one, so they don't even have this in the agreement. In the other one, they had, you know, what our share of the? We paid three hundred and seventy thousand dollars or three hundred and seven thousand dollars worth of engineering today on South Main Street. So you get a little bit different feel of how this one goes together. It's similar in the fact that all water and sewer is still not a participatory. That's all on the city. So if you look down at the non-participating construction costs of one million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars, that's water and sewer. It also doesn't include what we're doing tonight, which is the electric construction. So this is just basically stormwater, streets, curbs, sidewalks. Are there any other questions on that?
I don't have any more. Vicki?
No.
No. Okay. Let's call a vote, please.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
Item F. Discussion decision on bid award project L-oh-three-one-seven-E. Overhead and underground equipment relocations for twenty-eight, for twenty-eighteen Mulberry Street. Can I get that title read, please?
Motion eighteen-six-two-four, authorizing the city manager to accept the bid for the Mulberry Street overhead and underground equipment locations. Project L-oh-three-one-seven-E, spec three-zero-six-zero, volume XIB.
And we have a motion for adoption.
Show move.
And a second?
I'll second.
All right, Steve. So this is, excuse me. This is gonna be, this is for moving everything that's above ground, underground. You're talking?
Well, that's not quite true. We're gonna move a percentage of it underground.
Okay.
And leave some of it above ground. We're putting everything in the historic district underground. And then we're coming up, and we're gonna be above ground in the northern half of the project. As typical with any street project, all the utilities are required to relocate. So the telephone, cable, and electric are gonna relocate this wall. The water and sewer will relocate with the street project because they're underneath the street. But that's why we're doing this one now, is so that we get the electric out of the way so that they can start constructing the curb and sidewalk, as it's in a rather tight right-of-way.
Is the boundary between the historic district and the rest of the project, is that at Fargo?
It's close to Fargo, yes.
Okay.
Starts just north of Madison and then runs up to Fargo. It's not precise, but it's along those lines.
Okay.
And it, we weren't required to have it become a historic district. And so technically, it's still not a historic district. It's been identified as a potential historic district. But if you remember, there was a meeting where the State Historic Society, SHPO, was going to fund it themselves. Now, they haven't done that yet, but they're still, I heard that someone had actually filed the documents finally. And so it will probably become historic district in the next five to six months. So we, the easiest way to deal with the impact in the historic district was to go underground rather than, because in the residential districts, the trees and the fences, they define the character of the historic districts.
So is there anything right now that's above ground that doesn't fall under the city or the utilities?
Yes.
And how is that being handled?
They've been noticed, and I assume that they're gonna do the same thing we are. They're gonna go underground.
Main Street?
Yep, somewhere near Main Street.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Go ahead and call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
Item G. Resolution eighteen dash, oops, yeah, eighteen dash twenty-four. Authorizing the issuance and sale of two point three zero five million general obligation promissory notes, series twenty-eighteen-A. Can I get that title read, please?
Resolution eighteen dash twenty-four. Resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of two million, two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars general obligation promissory notes, series twenty-eighteen-A.
I move we? What?
I'm sorry. No, I'm just, I'm reading it. There's a different value.
Yes.
That's correct.
You probably have the old ones. The new ones came in, and they should be lower.
And they are.
Right, right. So the agenda was prepared a while ago, so the agenda's gonna show it different than what it actually happened on today.
Okay, so it's two, two point two six five million instead of two point three zero five.
Correct.
Okay.
I move we adopt resolution eighteen twenty-four, authorizing the issuance and sale of two point?
Two six five.
Two six five million.
I'll second.
All right. And I know we have some discussion here.
Yes, we have John Cameron, our municipal advisor from Ullers, here to answer your questions.
Good evening, everyone. What I can do, if it's okay, is just to briefly walk through the sale day packet. I have to answer any questions that you might have. In regards to the two thousand and eighteen-A, the promissory notes, we had, really with both issues, we had a very good sale today. We took bids at eleven o'clock this morning. For the promissory notes, we received five bids, with the winning bidder being VOK Financial Securities out of Milwaukee. They're an underwriter that we see frequently bidding on deals across the state with a true interest cost of two point seven four-three-one percent. The high bidder was two point nine one-two-five percent, so about a, just under a thirty-one thousand dollar difference in terms of interest rate spread between the high and the low. Five is a good number. Motley, what we're looking for is at least three in terms of bidders, so a good, strong sale. As part of the process, as I explained last month, we did go through a rating. The rating with S and P was affirmed, double A minus, with a stable outlook. The rating report is attached to both this packet for the A issue and the revenue bond rating is attached to the B issue for your reference. As part of the bid, we did receive a premium of fifty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars, of which nineteen thousand, four twenty-nine was used to reduce the issuance size with the balance being deposited into the debt service fund to help make the two thousand and twenty interest payment, which two thousand and twenty, from an existing debt service standpoint, we have a little bit of a bump in the overall debt service payment, so it helps to kind of alleviate that over time. In terms of the packet itself, pages three and four show you the results of the different bidders. Page five shows you the sizing for the debt in terms of the preliminary and then the final sizing. And then really, if you jump to the larger fallout page, which is page six, and it gives you the final sale results. So you have your existing debt on the left-hand side of the page, total debt service payments, the amount that's abated by other sources, the net amount that actually hits of your existing debt that hits the tax levy and the tax rate associated with that debt. And then the section next to that in green is now the final sale results for the promissory notes, including the deposit to the debt service fund, and then the overall tax rate impact. So overall, if you look at the very bottom of the page, we were able to reduce the principal amount by forty thousand. The interest rates came in tad bit higher than where we were projecting from a pre-sale standpoint, but pretty, pretty close to what we had. So the overall net result in terms of total principal and interest over the life of the notes was fifty-five thousand, forty-six dollars to the better than what we projected in the pre-sale report that we presented to you last month. Beyond that, then, like I said, is the rating report for the general obligation debt. And then the final page just shows you a one-year trend in bond ratings, really at the level that the city has rated on a double A, double A scale. And really, just what it shows is kind of what we've been hearing in the news and really what we've been talking about recently is that bond rates are starting to creep up, but as you saw from the sale results today, we did still have a very good favorable result for the city. So, any questions on that?
No, I don't have anything. Anybody? Okay. So we have, do you have anything, Steve? You want to add to that before we?
Well, I really like page nine of the S and P report.
Very strong management, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, it is. You know, that's definitely a big part of their rating. And, you know, really kudos to the city in terms of management approach, and it certainly helped you in the rating, you know, the overall rating process. So definitely a strong indicator, and certainly something that helped with your stable outlook.
Okay, let's call a vote.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
Okay, it brings us to item H. Resolution eighteen twenty-five. Authorizing the issuance and sale of one point seven seven million-dollar sewer system and light and water utility mortgage revenue bonds, series twenty-eighteen-B of the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, and providing for the payment of bonds and other details with respect to the bonds. Could I get that title read, then?
Resolution eighteen dash twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of one million, seven hundred seventy thousand sewerage system and light and water utility mortgage revenue bonds, series twenty-eighteen-B of the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, and providing for the payment of the bonds and other details with respect to the bonds.
All right, I'll entertain a motion of adoption.
Show move.
Second?
All right. I guess this brings us over to you again.
Okay. So with this one, we received four bids, with the winning bidder being Bernardi Securities out of Chicago. The true interest cost or the tick on it was three point six one-eight-one percent. The difference between the high and the low was about forty-one thousand. So again, another strong sale, very solid bid results for the city on this. As part of the bid, we did offer the ability for the winning bidder to purchase insurance, bond insurance on the bid, which helps improve the overall rating on it, which they did elect to take, so that's also built into the sizing. But as part of this, S and P did affirm the utility's single A rating, which is a notch below the overall general obligation rating. So again, a very strong outlook for the utilities. As part of this issue, we were also able to downsize by thirty-five thousand in terms of the principal reduction amount due to a premium that was received as part of the overall bid. If you jump ahead just to page seven, just kind of showing the final sale results, and if you look really at the bottom of the page, in addition to the reduction in the principal amount, we also received lower, a little bit lower interest rates than what we projected in the pre-sale, which yielded some additional savings from what we showed last month. So about a sixty-one thousand dollar overall principal and interest reduction over the life of the bonds. So a very good sale. So with that, I have to answer any questions you might have.
So you said the rating, the rating on the utility was a single A?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody have anything? Steve, do you have anything?
Well, one of the reasons that we're at a single A is the amount of money that we have in liquidity.
Right.
Is kind of short. And the other one is, is that with, we have a lot of debt issues coming up with lead replacement and radium and corrode and all that. So they, one of the downside scenarios is we need to keep our rates up high enough to pay for all that.
Right.
They still anticipate we'll be competitive, but not as low as we've been.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
Sure.
Let's call a vote.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item I, resolution eighteen dash twenty-six, wastewater treatment plant compliance maintenance annual report. And if you could read the title on that for me, please?
Resolution eighteen twenty-six, authorizing the city manager and staff to submit the Lake Mills wastewater treatment plant compliance maintenance annual report to the state of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion of adoption for resolution eighteen twenty-six.
I move adoption of resolution eighteen twenty-six, Wisconsin wastewater treatment plant compliance maintenance annual report.
And a second?
I'll second.
All right, I think this is on you, right, Steve? It looked good from what I saw. Everything was? All right, I think this is on you, right, Steve, it looked good, from what I saw, everything was, was an A, a hundred percent, and a four point oh GPA, so.
Yeah, it's consistent, the only problem we have is we're getting old. But other than that.
That happens to everybody.
Yeah, so, otherwise, everything's managed in a fashion that keeps us at the top of a project. There are some things that are, that are noted in there, we should, in the report that we need to keep our eye on. And the motion says that, yes, we will comply with, with requirements set up in the CMAR, which at this point aren't anything, but a couple of years ago, if you remember, we spent about one point one million dollars out there to, to upgrade quite a bit, and depending on what happens with the phosphorus to control the lead, we may have to do some other things, and of course, we've been looking at nitrogen adjustments for years now, haven't seen them come through, we may not. But if they come through, we will spend a lot of money there, so that'll change how the overall CMAR looks. We've been able to control our ionized, our inflow and infiltration pretty well over the last couple of years. So we haven't had a lot of sanitary sewer overflows. Which keeps us in pretty good shape. We've been able to upgrade most of our older lift stations, we'll need to keep an eye on those and make sure that we keep those updated, particularly the force mains, which tend to break if they get too old. And then you, you get sanitary sewer that comes to the surface. That's a very unpopular item with the DNR.
So does the DNR actually come through and do this, some of these tests with us, or is this all self-assessment?
This is all self-assessment. We have to file those on a regular basis, they do come out and do inspections. I know the water one is called the sanitary study, which always freaked me out because I thought it was the sanitary sewer one, not the water. It's actually the water one. And I'm trying to remember, but they, they do come out and they, they actually run tests on their own at, in the creek to verify our numbers.
Self-flow, yeah.
Yeah, and, and so they, they do do some investigation on us on a regular basis. But most of the time, it's, it's in cooperation with us, they come out and they go through our facilities and they pick up what they need and kind of go on.
All right. Okay, whenever you're ready, we'll, we'll call a vote.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
That moves us on to item number nine, Recommendation for Future Agendas.
Hopefully, we don't have another, we don't have an agenda on July third.
Oh, right, okay.
Try and get around letting people be gone for the fourth weekend, or however they want to schedule that.
So, in, I guess in reference to the items that Mr. Temperley wanted, we'll get, we'll find those, get them on the website? And are we gonna be able to email those directly to him?
I can email them directly to Todd. I'll have to do a little bit of research on the amount of use of the community center.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know that that was as relevant as, as he was trying to make it, because all the groups that
Yes.
wanted to use it and feel that it met the needs that they had, it was, so the way the facility was designed was more for a, you know, city meetings and those types of things, rather than having a, a place where you go and are maintained for other types of activities, so. Which is what we debated and, and I think was in the report.
It was, yeah, it, yeah, the facility downstairs is more for ad hoc meetings, get-togethers, maybe a family party, or somebody wants something like that. But yeah, it just, well, it serves a great purpose, it doesn't serve the purpose that we were looking at for a community-type center.
Right.
So. Okay, I guess we'll leave it at that, and we are adjourned.